Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to our study session originally scheduled for 1:00. Now, much like your airline delayed 16 minutes, we will jump right in with our strategic plan check-in, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Braggy and staff.
Good afternoon to our board members and to our administrators and staff and to our community. We are doing something a little new this year as we've been refining our communication loop with the strategic plan. In front of you, you will see it's what we refer to oftentimes as our scorecard, and that is the packet of information that should look familiar to you. That is our strategic plan update quarter one. This is our progress just for quarter one. And then we also have for you a data and highlight sheet for you. We're going to speak very quickly to some of the data that we have, the implications of that data, and just also a few highlights along the way. And we will start with Ms. Laura Collins-Williams.
Thank you, Dr. Braggy. Thank you, board and colleagues. We are starting with our student service-
If she comes closer to the microphone, Michael.
Yes, they're switching over right now.
I'll speak louder. Is that better, Mrs. Marcus? Can you hear me better? All right. So if you look at the update, the scorecard, most of our areas, academics, attendance, district-wide behavior, expectations, social-emotional learning, those are still all in progress. Our community engagement one has been met. And so I'm going to walk you through each one quickly. Regarding academics, we are still working and providing our targeted skill-building instruction via direct instruction for students in reading and math. We're using our SRA curriculum. If you look at this, you'll be able to follow up what I'm talking about. It's the first sheet in the supplemental packet. So we're also going to be comparing that data with our iReady data and our NWEA data to track the progress of our students with IEPs and 504s. The next area is attendance. Our goal is 95% attendance for each site and district-wide. There's a small grid there, but as you can see, we are getting very close overall as a district from August through October. We're at approximately 93.5%. So we are very close. I've broken down the information for you district-wide and by site, Monday through Friday. We are doing much better than we have been in the last couple of years, and we will continue that push to make sure that students are in school and in class learning. The next one, our behavior slash discipline and our district-wide expected behaviors. Just want to really highlight, it's in progress, but we've made some really good progress towards this goal. The first piece is we have now established our district-wide expected behaviors. They were part of our Unity Day. We're going to be doing a big rollout to the district shortly to promote them to our students and our families. And then on the data side, I would like to thank all of the site principals. And Dr. Braggy, we've been working collaboratively to review each site's data. We met individually with each site, looked at their actual behavior data and went through it, talked it through, and made sure that we are all on the same page as far as our standard operating procedures. And we have made some significant changes in our area system and in our practices to ensure that the data that we're collecting is actually clean and usable. So while you see the Student Services Department picture here, it is a collaboration. So I want to make sure that we are giving credit to everyone who's involved in this process. Our PBS and social-emotional learning, our schools are moving through their annual support and training through Laco with Laco. And each site, we'll talk a little bit more about what they're doing specifically, but we have social-emotional learning lessons going on at each site. And we are also building out our PBS pyramids to support that learning. And then the last thing is one that we haven't checked in the Met box. When we met the first time, I talked about instituting our alternative dispute resolution process, or known as ADR for short, to help resolve disputes in our special education department. We have this process in place, and we have used it successfully in a couple of different cases and have been able to avoid litigation and attorney fees. So we will continue with that, and we'll do some more spreading that information to our parents and to our community so we can hopefully use that process instead of litigation. And that's all for Student Services.
Thank you.
So now I will pass it on to Drew.
Just one question.
Yes.
I noticed on the Fridays is the lowest.
Yes.
And I recall that we did have low attendance on the day of jihad, which was a Friday.
Yes.
So I would think that you probably would meet your 95% if you took that force majeure event out.
We can look at that data. We're also looking at some additional data just about around the other holidays, other breaks in the calendar.
Yeah.
And we can, we'll present that to the board and have a more detailed conversation at that point.
Yeah.
But yes, that-
I think you would probably-
We'd be very close.
Yeah.
I agree. And maybe we can get an exception because of that. Can check into it with the team. I'll make a note of that.
Thank you.
Thanks for having us, President Vargo and the rest of the Board of Education. Here to provide a brief snapshot of where we are at the end of quarter one for the high school. So with our sort of graphic organizer here, the thing that I'm going to touch most on today is academics. We've been making significant progress in all five of our goal areas. But today, I'm going to spend some time talking, brief amount of time, talking about academics and some of the things that we've been doing. And then if you have any other questions related to that or any of the other goals, happy to discuss that now or at some point. So a couple of things that we've been doing in the realm of academics that we're really excited about. We started our student review process. So we're looking at our five-week data for students that are struggling academically. We met with all of the teachers in the school who chose a grade level to attend, along with our counselors and administrators, as well as allowing them to give us extra feedback, that being teachers or any other folks on our staff, to help us try to figure out and decipher why some kids are struggling academically. So we've had right around 50 meetings so far from the five-week grade reporting mark with families of students that have been struggling. And so we are continuing that. We're actually about to begin our second round of those following our 10-week progress report grades. And obviously, we won't know until the end of the semester the fruits of these particular labors in terms of student success. But so far, anecdotally, what I can say is that we are seeing families that are very, very grateful. I don't think we've had a single family, in fact, I can't think of one that has refused to participate in this process. So we've had all of these families come to school, have a conversation with us and an administrator and their student counselor to help try to get to the root of the issue for why their student review struggle academically. So we are cautiously optimistic that this is going to continue to pay dividends for us as the semester goes on. The second area I wanted to highlight is relates to AP. One really exciting thing that we announced, I think it was recent study session for US News and World Report, is between the district and, and thank you to the Board of Education and the district office, we're going to be covering the cost of all AP exams for our students this year, which we have had several families already reach out to us with gratitude for that. You know, they may have four or five test takers in their household, and it just is a cost that is a lot for some people. So in addition to the fact that it's just nice to be able to offer this for folks so that there is not a financial burden. The other thing that we're seeing is that in addition to a new course in AP, which is AP art history, we're going to have about 185 more test takers in AP this year, which is going to definitely help our dashboard numbers. And it's going to help in the other thing that I'll talk about in just a sec, which is our honor roll and our AP access award. So this year, we also received the honor roll for the amount of students that are taking exams, for the amount of students that are passing with a three or better, and for our open access, that we're not creating barriers for students to be able to take the AP. So also exciting there. And then the last one is end of UEA. I'm sure you're going to hear from the other sites, whether it's BV and NWA and the elementary's and iReady. We successfully launched our NWEA initiative at the very beginning of the semester. We had our first round of data chats related to creating our baseline data. And then we're looking forward to, originally it was scheduled for December, but in talking with our teachers with the end-of-semester stuff, including finals, we decided to move our second testing window to January, where it will be a little bit less stressful, still test what the kids learned semester one, analyze the data in January versus the data from back in August slash September, and really hopefully have some robust conversations around how our students are growing, where they're not growing, and how we need to continue to address those needs. And we're excited that they're going to be kind of, NWA is going to be sending sort of their high school expert to facilitate those data chats with us. We think we'll get a lot more meaning out of the data conversation this time in January. So all we think are very exciting issues that are happening as relates to academics. And so additionally, Ms. Collins-Williams talked a little bit about attendance. I'll just shout us out. We have so far reached our 95%. We're at about 96% at the high school for our attendance goals. And so we're just continuing to look to progress there, or at least maintain that really high attendance rate. And everything else is going along well. I want to leave enough time for questions and/or anybody else.
Thank you.
The other people there.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Senioritis hasn't really set in yet. It's early.
Can I just piggyback on one thing I forgot to say? We're also having our first district attendance and review board team meeting on the 16th of this month. So students who are not coming to school at each site, we're bringing them in and having conversations with them.
I would say that-
With the advantage.
That if we're holding a little over 95% over our goal, we are going to have to be cautious in the second semester with seniors. We know that.
Yeah.
So one, that'll be an outlier. And maybe we can find a way to excuse them from the data, you know, and be able to do like data with and without seniors.
That can just-
Because you guys, you know, we can do that. The school shouldn't be irresponsible for that.
One funny thing, if I may add, as it relates to attendance, I was in a executive board meeting with PTSA, all those folks. And I was not expecting to be grilled quite as much in that meeting. Well, almost all of them received attendance letters of one kind or another because they're- And these are our, these are our big supporters. And so I barely left alive, and I just said, hey, we can't pick and choose who we're sending these letters to, but I am glad that they're working. Because they were like, what is this? And it's a wake-up call to a lot of families. So it's been very-
Could change this year.
For sure.
Drew, I have a question. For the students struggling academically in the meetings that you have with those families, what basis did you define struggling?
I knew you were going to ask that, and you're not going to be happy with my answer. Ds and Fs. We have not expanded that yet to students with Cs.
No. I, when we talked about it last, you said that's how you were starting.
Yeah.
And we said we had to see what kind of capacity that your administration had to be able to handle those before we could expand it to students who may be struggling with Cs and Ds, let's say. So I appreciate being upfront about that. And that's a question for you to ask. Can you start bringing more families into that circle? Or are you already spread thin? Now that you've done it, you'll have to ask and answer that.
Did you, the quick answer is it's going to be challenging, especially in the fall. We're just administratively, we're also in the midst of like our teacher evaluation process. So there's a lot of things that are happening right now. And quite frankly, there are probably some students with singleton Ds or Fs that we haven't met with. It really has been triaging students with multiple Ds and Fs to start with.
Okay. That's fair enough.
That was my question.
And did you have, from the parents and the families that you did contact, did you have 100% participation from those families? Or do you still find there are some slipping through the cracks?
Yes. I will double-check with my colleagues, but I believe to date, we have not had a single family refuse to meet with us.
Okay.
That we've mentioned.
Good to know. All right.
Which has been really nice.
Any other questions, colleagues?
Just a quick question. So as you know, there's been like a movement towards kids being able to call in sick for a mental health day.
Yeah.
Now, I had had some concerns about that being allowable just for a lot of reasons. That's, you know, that's, it's a fine line between you just feel like, you don't feel like going to school, and you want to take a mental health day. But I'm just wondering if that has caused an increase in, in your opinion, in children or students not coming because of that card that they can play?
It's a great question, and I can look into the raw number of how many students are calling in for mental health days. I would say, again, anecdotally, no, because our attendance overall is up. So it's hard for me to say that I think it's having an adverse effect because our attendance in general is better. But I can get those numbers and see how many it is. Quite frankly, I don't know how many people are aware of that yet.
Right.
Because it's-
No, they aren't, sorry.
We're not getting, we're not getting a flood of people calling in for that.
Yeah, scratch that.
But there have been some people that have used it. And when we have a conversation with the parents, it's for reasonable, it's reasonable.
So I can piggyback on that, Dr. Stern. We've done some training on backend with the attendance office staff at each site. And it is actually an edcode like you referenced, but it's only one day. So you get one day per year.
Oh, I didn't know that. One day per year.
So think wisely.
Yeah.
Because that's the only day that you get to call in for that, or you know, say that you're taking a day out of school for that. So I don't think it'll be extremely impactful, but we did, we do have the edcode now in our system to be able to, and we have a code in our system to be able to mark it as such. So we can run that data if the board is interested in having that information.
Well, it sounds like it is minimal, so that's good. I didn't realize it was one day.
Yes.
I thought it was a card blanch.
No, no, no. There are parameters on it.
I can negotiate one for the administration.
How about the adults?
And I apologize, I didn't reference the screen, but we're all in progress and everything.
Okay.
But can I ask you a question, please? Since you've got your bright line with the Ds and Fs, I just really want to encourage that even if there's a student with one D, I think they should, their family should get a call too. Please.
Definitely. And I would say that happens. Teachers call home on those students. Counselors call home. Administrators do. It is, but your point is well taken in terms of trying to sort of make it more of an automated thing.
Yeah. It doesn't have to be more than one D. I think based on where we're trying to go, one is enough to warrant a call.
Okay.
Please.
I think too, just, and I'm sorry, Drew, but as they're going through the process, also like primarily focusing on like incoming ninth grader in the district as well. You know, like if we're to pick from, you know, because some of those families don't know the level of intervention or the access levels of intervention. Versus like a junior with a D that might be tussling back and forth, but it's been in the campus for three years. You know, like a new-to-district junior who's now getting a D, you know, maybe isn't aware of like tutoring during lunch periods after school. And so sometimes that invitation or that connection is super beneficial.
For sure. And just again, I, the students that I have had on my caseload for these meetings have been seniors. And several of them have been new-to-district folks, either from the East Coast or a couple of one that came from private school. And like you're saying, the families were very, very grateful for the meetings. They, and the ones coming from private actually said, I can't believe the level to which you're paying attention to my kid.
Yeah.
Like, she's been here for five weeks, and you're already having a meeting because she's, has some low grades. And her grades had gone up from when I had sent the email home to me, to the meeting. And they're like, can you, can we have a meeting every Friday?
Yeah.
So-
Sure. And also, I think from a parenting perspective, we just really close the loop with the child in terms of, these are our expectations. Well, we met with the admin. You know what I mean? We're, we really become the parents' partners in helping them help their kids. I think it has a real far-reaching impact.
And we will do our level best, but I also will temper our expectations and say there is not infinite time.
Understood.
And kids kind of come in and out of Ds frequently.
Yeah.
And so we will try to see what we can do as far as to try to make it more programmatic that we are contacting those people as well. But it, it's, yeah.
Thank you.
See, I think there's a finesse in this because there's students who may have not turned in a major project. Maybe they were out. And when teachers, my understanding is Ares, doesn't let you not put a grade in or something, right? You have to, they get a zero until they turn it in.
There's, and there's some nuance, and teachers do it differently. Some will leave it blank. Some will say it's like not entered, and it doesn't affect a kid's grade because they're understanding, and the kid's communicated with them, and they're going to turn it in. And there are some that put it in as a zero to light a fire under them to get it done.
Right. And then when that happens, Drew, you'll wind up with a D.
Yeah.
Even though if they had turned it in, they might have a B.
Yeah.
So that's, that's why it's a little more nuanced than just flagging every D. But it should be something that at least we look into.
Agreed.
Before we set up a meeting with parents, we should at least know where the D or F is coming from.
100%. And like one, like having done this now for many years, there is like AP art classes, for example, are portfolio-based. And a lot of times, you'll look at it and be like, what is going on? This is a straight A kid. They have a D or an F. But I know now that that portfolio is going, like I know, I've spoken with those kids and the teachers enough that I know that the portfolio is coming in forthwith and that their grade's going to go up to an A.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm with you.
Okay.
But, sorry, just to piggyback there. I think, I think what we all need to be conscious of and where I'm starting to learn more about is just that whole parent, the, the, the parent engagement where when a student sees Drew and mom or dad or guardian next to each other, to that kid, it comes full circle.
Yes.
And that's where I think sometimes we miss when we talk about like community or parent engagement. It's about how do we engage you in the conversation? But it's more about showing the student that we're in conversation about you. So that student can't play one versus the other. And that's, you know, when it escalates to like our level, that's usually what we're unpacking is it's like, yeah, the answer is still out.
That's what I mean by closing the loop.
Yeah.
And then in that case-
Interesting.
The two parents become the family at home and the admin of that, of that child. You know what I, you know what I mean? We become partners with the admin for accountability.
And is there data available for, like that shows how many parents are actually getting information pushed to them about grades? Yeah, we can look at parent square data to show what, it was sent, it was opened, it was-
Parents can actually adjust it, so-
Yeah, there are settings.
Yeah, there are settings where parents can go into their account and say, I want to know when it drops below a B. I want to know when it drops below a C. So for their family, they can decide what that level is that they want to be engaged in. And they're being sent out. I can see that someone out today, so.
Yeah.
Because it is the full circle piece, like-
For example, I have mine set up, my updates on Saturday morning. Because then that gives me the whole weekend for my family to know how to manage time. And what does Saturday afternoon and Sunday have to look like? You know, can we be active?
And that's routine, right?
Or do we need to buckle down on Sunday afternoon?
Your family knows every Saturday. It's very benevolent to give them Friday. That's nice.
Yes. I do, yeah. We all need a moment.
Yes.
Thank you.
I apologize, just because it's conversational. It's a-
It's important.
One other thing that, because it's between Drew and Kelly, that I want to kind of throw out there on behalf of us as a group, is another thing that we're looking to bring to the Board of Education in the spring is the Avid program. It's something that we haven't explored here in the USD. What it really focuses on first-generation college-seeking students and addressing it very early on. It's a very structured program. It comes with curriculum in place of like, It comes with curriculum in place of like, I'm going to use the word study hall, but it's not a study hall. It's teaching, it's a credit seminar, um, being able to understand effective note taking, teaching the kids that they get access college caliber work right off the gate, as early as sixth grade. Uh, very data driven, it's implemented across the United States. I come from an Avid school district, Drew and Kelly both come from Christie Bonner Head Counselor at the high school. We have the team in place. But we want to be able to bring it and do a demonstration because it's another thing through the strategic plan that we've identified of like, how do we now get them talking earlier about college in an effective way that's also not pulling away from instruction, but we're supporting them in organizational skills and, you know, um, uh, daily instructional skills while still in introducing the whole concept of post-secondary options. So I just wanted to throw that out there too, as this is, you may see this morphing within their sections of their strategic plan as we're moving into second semester. Um, and then by hopefully maybe an implementation of default as a loose pilot. And so that's just one of the things that we wanted to throw out there, um, as we're addressing even post-secondary options in between the two school districts, uh, two schools. So, sorry, now hand you.
All right, thank you. I'm so excited for this one. I feel like we've been doing so much first quarter. Um, all of our goals are still in progress, um, but we've made a lot of progress on them. So for academics, very similar to the high school, uh, we are, just had our 10-week report cards come out. We do our grade level meetings. Dr. Brady actually got to come and visit our grade level meetings and see how the teachers come together. We talk about the kids, we figure out what interventions need to be in place for our students. And then our counselors do all the follow-up work, so that's what they're in the process of doing. So as of Friday, when I got the data from the counselors, uh, because the numbers are probably changing this week because they're continuing with some of these meetings. We've had 46 D and F meetings with students and families. Um, we have offered 27 additional interventions to students. So students that weren't previously in an intervention, whether it was an intervention class or after-school tutoring or lunch support, we have sent, um, letters home indicating, here's the intervention that we have identified for your student, we want them to attend and make that official offer to the students. And then we track all of that data, the students that are showing up to the lunch support or the after-school tutoring. Um, we have about 20 students that show up to our after-school tutoring every day. It fluctuates depending on when there's a test in, you know, math seven or whatever. Um, but about 20 students, it's totally free and the kids know, it's advertised every day. We have our Alex math intervention and we have identified a significant number of students that need to be in that program. We have scheduled them into individualized advisories, so that whole group of students is supposed to be on Alex. The teacher knows that they're all on Alex and so they can utilize that advisory time to use that software, that math intervention. We have an identified teacher that's been going into the advisories to enroll the students. So right now we're at about 50% of the students enrolled and we're continuing to get them, um, enrolled in the coming weeks. We, um, have continued our implementation of the C E Rs. Math was actually at the district office today doing their C E R grading day. And I was very excited this morning, um, from last year when Math did their grading day to this year, the difference not only in the student samples, but in my teachers and how they've approached it. It's still a work in progress. It's still not perfect, but the difference that I've seen, um, in these grading days has been tremendous. And then like Drew, we have done our first round of N W E A assessments, data analysis. I actually convinced, uh, Dustin to give my teachers a full day for that data analysis. So they had the morning where they got to look at the, the data. And then I helped facilitate with them kind of next steps, action plans of what are you going to do with this data? I asked my teachers to identify, um, three students each of who they were going to specifically like target and monitor. And then we're going to follow up. Of course, the expectation is for all, but I wanted them to really like look into that data. So I'm very excited with that progress on the N W E A. Attendance, we're meeting our goals. So, um, we have, uh, Jeanette, she's taken over, uh, Suzie, who is doing attendance. It's been a great transition. We missed Suzie, but Jeanette's been doing amazing in that attendance role. And I, I believe that her and the Ms. Perkins are overseeing attendance. It's a testament to their work ethic that our attendance rate is where it's at because they are working hard, sending those letters, making the phone calls, making the connections with families. Like kid needs to be here. Uh, Ms. Perkins brings to our admin meeting every week our attendance report. And we talk about all the kids who are not coming to school. Each grade level administrator kind of identifies like, okay, who do we need to call this week in terms of attendance? So we have a nice system going with that. Um, our behavior expectations, even our, our teachers are noticing a difference this year on our campus. So I think kind of the outcome of the behavior committee that we had over the summer and some of the things that we've implemented, it's a noticeable difference on our campus. Um, we had our Bulldog Day, first day of school, and then we had our Bulldog Day 2.0 in October, which was a great kind of reset for students. We had a guest speaker, um, we did an admin chat where the SROs came and spoke about Halloween and the new expectations and kind of, um, I did a whole social media presentation to the entire school, um, different grade levels at a time, kind of expectations. I shared the PowerPoint out with families. Um, we continue to do our monthly admin chats and send those summaries out to parents. Uh, we have with the support of Laura and her department, we've launched our alternative to suspension program, which is going really, really well. Um, the parents are on board with it. We have more buy-in from them in terms of getting the students on the right track. And it feels more collaborative and a partnership with the parents in supporting the students and correcting behavior as opposed to just let's suspend and send them home. Um, we did our behavior pledge at the start of the school year. And then our updated student parent handbook that has our expectations, the behavior pledge. And then this year we added to it, um, all of our menu of options for consequences so that parents and students know what, um, are the possibilities. And at our Bulldog Day 2.0, I, I personally led the admin chat and, you know, made sure every student knew that any adult on campus could give a direction and could give a consequence. So noticeable difference at BBMS this year. Our social emotional learning goal, um, we've done two grade level counseling, uh, lessons schoolwide. So our counselors go in, we rotate through what department, so they've done two of those already this year. Um, and of course last week we opened our Bulldog Day Wellness Center. So thank you guys for that, it was amazing. Um, and then, uh, Ms. Hartley will be taking off with her Wellness Wednesday. She's been kind of trying to do it, but now that she's got her own dedicated space that can really launch. Um, and then with the grant from B G F, she's really going to be able to jump into those Wellness Wednesday programs. Um, and then community engagement this year, we added, uh, we do our parent university series, but we really felt like we wanted to start the year off, uh, with our sixth grade parents. So we did one specific for sixth grade parents, kind of a little mini social, but then also kind of talk about how to survive middle school. We had, um, parent volunteers come and kind of facilitate tables during the social part where, um, sixth grade parents could go up to the clubs table and ask current parents like, hey, how do clubs work? How do I get my kid into clubs? So that was a really successful parent university. Uh, we had a tech one already on Aries and, uh, Google Classroom. So just another way to kind of, um, like it's been mentioned, kind of close the loop or close the gap with the communication parent home. Like they had to teach the parents, especially some of the sixth grade parents, how to even use Aries, how to access the grades, how to set up those notifications. So we had a parent university on that. Uh, this year I put a request out for parent volunteers on campus, so, um, I'm very grateful. They come and monitor our ball cart and check out the balls at lunchtime to students. And it's awesome to have parents there every day. I've got, um, parents that come into the front office and they help with making copies or filing stuff or summering out, even like helping to answer the phones, they love it. Um, so it's been nice to have parents kind of back on campus post-COVID to kind of feel back to like how school used to be where we had kind of room moms. But at the middle school, it's not like room moms, it's they're just on campus in other ways helping. Um, and then P T A is working to, we have parent liaison is what we're calling them. And so they're dedicated parents to kind of like a team mom, but they're for our departments and for our clubs. So we're working on implementing that. That's it, just a snapshot.
Thank you.
I couldn't fit it all on one page, so this is like as much as I could fit on the page.
So Dr. Skon, my only question was on the Bulldog Day 2.0.
Yeah.
I had heard from people that there was like an attendance issue that day. And I'm just curious.
With eighth grade in particular.
Eighth grade, okay.
Yes.
So I'm curious as why that occurred and, and how to avoid that in the future.
Yes.
Because once again, like seniority, you want to avoid the attendance.
Yes. Um, so I think a couple of things. One, I think, uh, the eighth graders knew that one of the sessions, it was like a mini conference for students. And so there was three, uh, sessions that they rotated through, a guest speaker that spoke about kindness, our admin chat, and then we did a community service project where they got to choose from different tables and they could either make blankets or make cards for veterans. Um, the feedback that I got from eighth graders was they didn't want to hear the admin chat. And so they convinced their parents to stay home. Um, and so I ran the list of who was absent. And I actually, the following week, called all of those eighth grade students into the auditorium and had a follow-up conversation with them. And I told them, I said, it's not okay to have missed an important day like that. You're still going to get the admin chat. And I did the admin chat with them. Um, and I, I made it very clear to them like, if we do one of these in the spring and you choose to not be here that day, then we'll do another follow-up admin chat during lunch. And you can spend your lunch with me instead, just coming to school that day. Um, I think another, um, missed opportunity was the advertisement, uh, to parents. So one of the things that I'm going to work on with my communications intern this year is making a little video, like a promo video for it so that when we do this next year, we have a video we can send out to parents, like on the importance of this day. Here's what we're doing and here's why we need to send your kids to school.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions about, uh, V V I's?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Dr. Skon. Moving on.
Hi, everybody, I'm so glad to be here. Um, I, did this time before? All of our goals are also in progress. Yeah, okay, just checking, I wanted to make sure. All of our goals are also in progress. I'm just going to touch on a couple of points for each of our, um, areas. So in academics, we are really happy to be using iReady. Uh, one of the things that we talk about at Hawthorne is collective teacher efficacy, which means that we're all talking about the same thing. We all have some input into common language, common understanding, common work. So that kids in second grade don't need to relearn something, um, when they come into third. So iReady has really provided that. It's taken out the questions about what, um, systems and what programs are we using on our iPads or on our computers and really connected it to one streamlined system. So as we're having staff talk between grade levels and articulation meetings, they're really speaking the same language about what they're using and we're hoping that that benefit will continue year after year. Um, basically all of our students have already taken the diagnostic. And, um, in our, um, parent teacher conferences, we presented our teachers, or sorry, our parents with all of the paperwork that, um, showed the scores. They were old scores, like August scores from when they first took the diagnostic, but helped teach, helped all of the parents to get onto that program. And they'll be able to see it as they take middle of the year assessments in December. Now we're, um, pretty confident, hopefully, that, um, our, our parents can get on and see their diagnostic in real time for where their students are going. Um, in addition to that work, um, we are, both Horseman and Hawthorne are, are, um, using partners in practice to talk about our math skills. And we've been, um, we have a math leadership team and it's spread out to all of our students. So we're taking time both in our Wednesday morning meetings and in our grade level meetings to talk about math conversations and how we're using like deeper knowledge around math so that it's like less direct instruction or, um, controlled release in math and much more exploration in terms of conceptual based understanding, which is where we know our students struggle the most in academics. Um, and then we've been doing, um, learning walks. We have our second one coming up where we're going into each other's classrooms just to have a, a chance to see what we're seeing. Um, like there, it's like the baby step to instructional rounds, but it's, um, low, low expectations, low stress as we walk into each other's classrooms to see what we're seeing and to compliment each other and to see that there's really some consistency and collective efficacy that's running through all of our classrooms. Um, and we finished our 10-week data chat, um, at the end of October so that all of our staff felt like they were prepared to talk to parents, um, for conferences. We're still working on conformant assessments and, um, essential standards and our pacing guides. So that's our to-do and our to-work, our delta pace as opposed to our plus. Um, in terms of attendance, on this page it says we have 95% attendance. Clearly I pulled attendance one week too early. Um, on, um, this column Williams page, it says we're only at 94.75%. Um, but we're very close, we're hanging on to that 95%. Um, we have 24 students who went through a short-term independent study program to account for 175 days that would have otherwise counted for an absence. Um, and a huge thank you to our staff that's running that. Um, and we made, we had 64 DART letters that went home, um, in two different rounds. And we've had meetings where we've needed to, had SSTs or parent conferences where we've needed to. Um, in terms of parent engagement, we're happy to report that there's only a handful of parents that didn't make it into parent conferences and those are still scheduled for later this week. All the conferences were supposed to end yesterday. Um, and a couple that we had a trouble getting hold of, but were on track to make sure that 100% are there. At this point we're at 99. Um, one of our other goals was to engage our students more in leadership roles in our schools. So over and above, um, student tour guides that fifth graders are doing this year and, uh, student council, we did global peer ambassadors, which are helping students who are new to our school, um, to feel welcome. And also students who speak another language at home to help connect and feel that like home language so that they can help each other on the playground, help to, help us to understand when there's a conflict so that they know that there's someone on their campus, even when they're not on the same grade level, to help to translate. And so that's going really well. We have 14 fourth and fifth grade students that are part of that program. Um, in terms of our behavior expectations, we continue to talk about hero and have it run through all of our classrooms and all of the conversations that we're having. At each of our staff meetings, we're adding tier-two tips, which is, um, students that are not just at the bottom of the pyramid, just following directions because we follow directions and, um, using hero just to, just because we say, you should be a hero. And they're saying like, of course I should be a hero, let's do that. So it's a student that might need a little bit more. And so we're sharing best practices every time we're together on a Wednesday morning with tier-two tips. And we've added, um, a pretty large check-in, check-out system, which is, um, school-wide tier-two, which is a little bit different than classroom tier-two for students that need something more than just their classroom teacher. Maybe they need to check in with someone else, um, at some point, um, on campus. They want to get their day started well. And so if a student's in my class, they might go to Dr. Brady's office in the morning to check in and just say, are we going to have a good day? What are your goals? We have that system that's been pretty flushed out around how do you identify students? How do we get kids onto a check-in, check-out? Um, how do we get students off of a check-in, check-out? And, um, if you, if a teacher needs a check-in, check-out or feels like they need a check-in, check-out for that student and they don't know what to do or where to go or how to set it up, but that's part of the form, like either I got it, I'm on it, I'm just giving you information that a student is going onto the system. Or, um, hey, I really, I'm not sure how to start, can you please reach out to me? And that's like a 48-hour turnaround with our tier-two team, which we're really happy to say is in place this year. Um, and we surveyed third through fifth grade students at the beginning of the school year and all of them can identify, um, parts of the hero that they represent. So that's part of our goals. In terms of social emotional learning, the biggest piece is this, um, solution wheel. We put it in to say that we wanted students to be able to identify problem-solving strategies and be able to use them on the playground. And so with the help of our instructional leadership team and our P B S team and our entire staff, we have our solution wheel that's up in every area of our school now, it's even on my name tag. So if you need to think about how you'd like to solve a problem, I'm happy to help you. As students are coming in, um, to the office and we're asking about, um, what happened? What were some strategies that you could have used or would have used in terms of their reflection? They're able to identify them. We're hearing much more that they're using them out on the playground. Um, our playground staff has all been trained in the solution wheel and how to help facilitate students using that and also to know when the problem is bigger than the solution wheel and they need to get involved and add that adults. So there's a tiny little copy there for you. Um, and our final goal is El Rodeo and a successful opening of El Rodeo School. So, um, I, I know that other people around this table are going to talk a little bit more about it, but I just want you to know that we are working on a change management team, um, with a small group of people. And we have an El Rodeo opening master plan. We use some of our skills that we used in reconfiguration. Um, we're very proud to dust them off and use them again about how do we really keep ourselves organized and get real clear like lists and spreadsheets to say, when are things due and who's in charge? And who needs to be notified and when are we updating them? And it feels, um, like things are really happening. We're very happy to say that. And we've put on our calendar a grand opening ribbon cutting for August 2020.
Dates, if you have a date on there.
Well, we're hoping that there's a calendar for the school year.
Yes.
That is just a little.
That little detail.
Little detail.
Much as we can share.
I don't know.
So August 19th. Um, Mrs. Marcus had something she wanted to add, so, um, on both B V, I think, and attendance, so. Mrs. Marcus, go ahead.
Noah, can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, we can hear you. Go ahead, Mrs. Marcus.
I'm trying to, so, speech, but I, I don't have you on, so, um. I don't know why, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
We can hear you.
Very well.
Okay, good. Um, I, I'd just like to make a couple of comments based on what just happened. Uh, I think we're going to find that the attendance might change somewhat. We may need to be aware of that, that with the flu season coming on, our attendance records are going to be somewhat affected by that. And I can only attest to that today. The other thing I wanted to talk about is that during the Bulldog Day, the use of school time for community service. I know last year I spoke about this when the kids went to the beach. And this year I speak about it for the short period of time they did it during Bulldog Day. Um, the only problem I have with this is that what kids are learning and carrying forward to other opportunities within the community or within whatever situation may arise. Uh, are, are we giving them the opportunity to recognize other situations where they can serve community service and know that it's really based on doing it, uh, on your own dime? In other words, not while you're in school, you're, 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 you're captive audience, but rather to go out and make that commitment in the community in one way or another. I mean, even I guess kids doing something for a teacher at lunch or helping them pack up or clear boards and all that are considered to be, but they're doing it on their own dime. And I just wonder how much carryover there is to that. Giving up teaching time, which I find so valuable, for kids to learn about and do community service on school time and then not doing, not being given opportunities to really do it where it really counts or where it would make a difference. And I'd like that to be, I'm just voicing that as my opinion. Uh, and that's the question, uh, the comment that I have.
Thank you. Um, anything else for Hawthorne? Any questions?
I, I had a, Rochelle, did you have anything else to add to that?
No, that, that's about it. I, I had questions on them, but I having a little difficulty hearing some of the comments that were made when they asked the questions. And I did have comments that I don't want to be redundant and repeat what may already have been said. Um, are there only, uh, the, the launch of the alternative and suspension program? How is that working? I don't know how that's working. Is that, have we reduced the suspensions and, and are the students, what are the alternatives? I don't know what that is. And that was one question. Uh, and, um, uh, we, you know, one of the disadvantages of setting these goals, that it can only be, except for the C E R assessments, is that setting goals of the 3% rise, and I guess I'm being redundant, is that we really won't know till maybe June or July, when the results of tests come in, if we have been able to realize, uh, our, what we're trying to do. So I just, I feel that unfortunately, when we go back to the table again, saying, and saying, hey, we won't know for sure if we succeeded in our goals. I think that's about it.
Do you want me to answer the?
Yeah, actually I had the same question. That would be great to hear about the alternative.
Yeah.
Great, so, um, we have a dedicated teacher to the program. And so when a student commits a suspendable offense, um, of course, depending on the gravity of the, um, offense, we look at, is the alternative a better option for the student? And so how that day looks, the student comes to school, um, at 8:30 instead of 8:00. So we strategically have them come not when their peers are there. And, um, they meet with the teacher. We have scheduled time with our, um, M F T, Julie. She comes in, uh, the teacher does some social emotional lessons with the students. And it's specific to whatever the offense was. So she doesn't have this like set canned curriculum. She's very much like on the fly when she is notified, hey, you have a kid coming tomorrow. Here's what they did. She will pull up, you know, here's, here's what they need for that. She communicates with that student's teachers, gets the work for them. So they are staying on top of their schoolwork, they're getting some counseling with the M F T. They are getting some social emotional lessons, um, and then have time to reflect on their behavior and make a plan moving forward. The teacher also follows up with the student for two weeks, like a post, um, suspension day, um, check-in, check-out with her to monitor like, are they making good choices? Are they staying on track? Hopefully so that they're not going to become a repeat offender. And we've seen really good success with it. I think we've had one kid that's had it twice. Everyone else has spent one time and we have not had a repeated offense with that student, so.
I think another really good piece to this is a conversation that you and I had that I'll probably never forget because it was really, it summed up nicely the difference between a resolution and a consequence. And what I like about this follow-up and this approach is that kids are going to be together throughout the rest of their middle school and then high school and often being in the same classes or walking down the hallway. And this gives them that opportunity to really come to a resolution if it's between two kids versus just giving the consequence. And you and I talked about that, that's something, it really didn't impact me as much until after we had that conversation, how important that was because they are in a relationship. They're part of a class. They're going to see each other in the bathroom or just walking, you know, at a sports event after school. And it's important to be able, to have those skills, to be able to know what they did, but then to move on because they're going to see each other for years.
And the other piece too is this is enriching our menu of other means of correction. Remember, that's something that's required by ed code. It gives us other ways to intervene and to reteach the behaviors that we're looking at. So I want to be real clear. Mrs. Marcus said something very specific. She says, "Are they reducing the suspensions or avoiding the suspensions?" Remember, that's not the eventual goal is, Kelly touched on that, Dr. Scott touched on that, and the fact that we don't want to have repeat offenders. But remember, we have to have a progressive discipline, a progressive approach to our discipline. We can't go from 0 to 100. We have to go, we have to continue to move through the continuum if needed. But this is kind of our first step. We're going in, we're doing some real work with, hey, what happened? Why did you do this? What was the root of this cause? To help, hopefully prevent this in the future and also to reteach, okay, next time, if it happens again, what's a better way to handle it so that you're not in this classroom or eventually suspended? So it takes some time to get there. But it is a requirement and it's a better approach because eventually we are teaching our students and our children what behaviors we want to see.
So when they do have an in-house suspension, does that go in the areas as a suspension? Or is that, it's not considered like a technical question?
Principal, it's, we've been talking about that for two weeks. Let's go, Dr. Scott.
So those are two options. So there's in-house suspension and there's our alternative to suspension. So an in-house suspension is what we were doing like last year and the year before, is they would literally come to school and sit in a room by themselves and do their own.
Or the principal's office.
Correct.
Okay.
Or like a small room in the front office. We're not putting them in the classroom by themselves. But alone and just on their own as opposed to sending them home to be by themselves. That's an in-house suspension, which counts as a suspension. The alternative to suspension, they have that dedicated teacher that's helping them facilitate their work, providing the social-emotional lessons, the time with the MFT, the restorative piece. So we've had a few times where she's been, the teacher's been in there with the two students that had the altercation. And they spend the whole day together and they spend the time with the MFT. They spend the time doing the SEL lessons together. So like Ms. Chisel was saying, or Collins Williams, so sorry.
I still do too.
That there is resolution and a restorative practice. And like Dr. Braggie was saying, because they have to be in the same class. They have to walk down the hallways together. And so they need that time to work it out with a facilitated adult.
I guess what I'm thinking about is going beyond just the altercations that kids have. But when someone does something really nasty online, which I've shared with you a few things. So obviously, it's difficult because there's a nexus of, you know, when do we have to respond? Because it was something that happened outside of school hours and all that, but it's a big problem, I imagine. So like for that particular situation that I addressed, was that a suspendable incident? Or how was that managed?
So there was one at the beginning of the school year. And we had two girls that we would have suspended had it been last year. But this year we had them in ATS, Alternative to Suspension, instead for two days each. And so they had two days of that process, working through the SEL lessons, meeting with the MFT. So yes, we are, even with the social, it doesn't matter what the offense is. If we would have considered suspension for it, we're now considering the alternative to suspension as a better option.
No, and I agree. Finally, when you have an SRO, assist them or sort of sit in a room with them, that's a pretty, I saw that. I was on campus right after the Bulldog AID Center. And I had a lovely chat with Officer Maitland, great lady.
Oh yeah, she had three girls that were with her.
Right. So I was like, wow. I mean, that means business. I think that sends a great message home. I know she was, you know, great with them. But so when would that be utilized, like that resource?
So that was not an alternative to suspension because it was with one specific teacher. So it was kind of a class suspension. And we had an incident happen with these students and a teacher. They were part of the stay-back group for the Museum of Tolerance field trip. And Maitland, Officer Maitland happened to be there that day. And so I said, "Officer Maitland, are you available?" And we went up and got a statement from the teacher, brought the students with us and had a like heart-to-heart conversation, me and Officer Maitland. And then Officer Maitland actually wanted to like remove them for multiple days, five days or I don't know. But it was like, "Oh, we actually can't do that." But she's all in on our campus. And so it was like her idea to sit with them.
I thought it was great. It was like, wow, what a luxury to have this lady.
She gave them an assignment, kind of came up with three questions together that they had to write. Single space type. She sat with them and helped them work on it and made sure they did it. And now she's a resource for those students.
Yeah, I thought that was another great option. Thank you.
How great. We're very creative at PBMS. We will try anything to register.
Which is part of the work that we've been doing. Some of that, the technical term is the administrative decision. So what does the administrator on the campus feel is the appropriate consequence for the behavior, the undesired behavior? So we have a whole menu of things. We've been working very closely with all four principals, making sure that we have more than just the standard things and the creative things that they're coming up with that are available to our students on campus to help reteach and form the behavior and elicit the behaviors that we want to see on campus. So that, I'm really excited about that work. If we want to talk a little bit more, then another time I can delve into it. I'm happy to show you our thousand-field database, show what we've been working on. But it's really coming together and I believe that it will affect the behavior that we're seeing and then the data will reflect that as well.
Okay. I just, I want everybody to be mindful of the time. It's 2:15. And we have a lot more updates to get to, so try to keep it going. Really keep your questions important to this particular study session. Thank you, Molly.
Thank you, President Margot. Thank you all for having me. I actually have the pleasure of sitting here. I'm Molly Wong. I'm the Assistant Principal at Horace Mann and I'm standing in to present our Goals of Excellence for Mr. Craig Buddy, who is off at a conference with our kindergarten team, Learning Strategies and Tools and Best Teaching Practices to Support Our Youngestness. So I'm going to jump right into it with our academics. I just want to first acknowledge Mr. Seaman and his team and all of you for having the vision to bring I Ready and provide us with a common assessment and a common language to actually assess where our kids are from kindergarten through 5th grade. It's been amazing and it's going to be a game changer. And I was thinking about Mrs. Marcus's question about how are we going to know if we've met our goal? And I Ready is so aligned with our state-required testing that I think our data is going to be super pure, that we will be able to have a predictor of how we're going to do at the end of the year based on that data for our 3rd, 4th, and 5th graders. It's really comprehensive. It's multiple domains. And I think it's going to give us some really, really great information. And I'm excited for our December assessment because I think to be able to compare those two is going to be just outstanding. So this year, because it is an implementation of a new program, and as you know, change sometimes is challenging. Really, our data chats has been focused on the I Ready process and then looking at that data that it's giving us and then kind of what are the next steps. So we've been able to do that twice now with the team, all 1st grader through 5th grade. So that's been very exciting. And we have another one planned in, it was change, I believe, now to February for us. So we're excited. And part of that process too gave us really great data to assess where our kids currently are and who are in need of a little more support. And we identified 60 students that are currently being seen in our intervention with Ms. Duffy. And that has been fantastic. And again, we can tailor it a little more to what their needs, we're showing their individual needs. And then we've had 16 SSTs so far this year. So those are our kids that didn't make the initial cut for intervention, but now we're starting to be concerned whether it's academics or behavior. So we're happy to support them and develop that plan, bringing the parent, the school staff, our intervention teacher, our counselor if needed. So it's been really exciting and I'm really looking forward to where we're going to land. Attendance, I was all excited too to share that we were at 95.29. And then I saw Ms. Laura Collins, Collins Williams' data that I'm not, I'm at 94. We are not, we're at 94. But we are, we're very, very close. And we have done a lot of work with the new process, attendance process that Ms. Collins and her, Collins Williams and her department have put together. We have had, we've sent out 70 attendance letters. We got on it right away. We're monitoring it weekly. We have been able to pull five, have five site attendance review team meetings with our parents. And we have also put 26 families currently on short-term independent study, which is going to help us recoup some of that attendance, positive attendance. And so that's something that we're really trying to push as well so that we get more families utilizing that, especially with the winter break holiday coming up. We were just talking about what our plan was to get the information out and get more families utilizing that. So that's very exciting. I'm going fast. I hope you don't mind. Our behavior expectations, we did a change. So we have a very active PBIS team at Horace Mann, a really great group. And we added to the group this past year. And at the end of last year, or actually during the summer, we did some planning and we thought, we do a really great job of teaching our kids our behavior expectations in the class. But we really wanted to expand that to the entire school because our data was showing that most of our problems were happening outside in that very unstructured time. So we put together a plan and we kind of got all the teachers, staff on board at the first, those pre-service in days where our staff went out in grade-level teams and explicitly taught the behavior expectations in each of the different areas. So it wasn't just coming from the PBIS team. It wasn't just coming from their teacher. It was like the three or four grade-level teachers teaching them what they expected in the bathroom, in the hallway, on the play structure, on the playground. And I think for us, that's made a huge difference in the number of office referrals we've had this year. We also, we had noticed that we weren't able to share our data out as often as we wanted. And we want to be a little more transparent. So what we did was, starting at the PBIS team and now a monthly faculty meeting, we're not only sharing out suspensions, if there are any, but we're also looking at our office referrals. And then I think with the new tweaks of being able to add different offenses, for lack of a better word, and kind of the area component, we're really going to be able to identify where our challenges, what we're doing well and where our challenges are, and then throw some brain power on how are we going to fix that? So again, we're excited to make those next steps. We also have a weekly admin meeting where we invite the counselor in. And we're talking about who, last week, who was at risk and really kind of talking about them and what can we put to support those students and get them up to par. So that's exciting. Our social-emotional learning, we're using Second Step. And that is happening twice a month in every one of our classrooms, delivered by our school counselor. So we're very, very, very excited about that addition because that really does give the kids the language and the tools to be successful, both in and out of the classroom. But our counselor has also been out on the playground during our recess time every day. So that's been helpful. And she's also been joining our, we are our Playground All-Stars, we call them, our Playground Aids. We have a monthly meeting with them. And she joins that team meeting now and gives them support as well. So it's kind of this ongoing kind of support, yes. And then community engagement, we have such a lovely community at Horace Mann, as do many of the schools or all the schools here in Beverly Hills. But our PTA is very, very active. And so we have already had a chili cook-off. We had a movie night. We have monthly bedtime stories. We have PTA meetings. The PTA also organizes Lunchtime Craft, so that's really fun for the kids. Just really fun. And then our art teacher, Ms. Graham, did a beautiful mural. Thank you for those of you who attended. And it just has been such a showstopper in our lunch table area. And the kids really got to participate. So that was a lot of fun too. So that's kind of all I have for you today, unless you have any questions for me.
Thank you, colleagues. Any questions for Horace Mann?
Just because you both mentioned it, what's the short-term independent study scenario you reference?
So it's an alternate, so if parents are going to be out of school from three, anywhere from three to 14 days. They have the option of notifying the teacher and they have work that is given to them that they need to complete. And they have five days upon their return to complete it. And it's been, it's really helped us.
Like if they're going overseas to visit grandma or something like that?
Yes. Or even if someone gets sick and they know that it's going to be a week time. We're able to access that.
And Judy, it helps our attendance as well because when they come back, we can count those days. As long as they complete the work.
Thank you. Okay, so if they complete the work, it's as if they had been here.
I beg to beg.
I guess a significant change from COVID where we used to have a short-term independent study program that was very loosely used. And then COVID, the legislation, ed code now supports it. And so it follows those guidelines and we have contracts and everything. So it's really clean process now.
Yeah, I'm sure the families are happy to be able to keep up and not get barraged with all the work when their student comes back.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, I think we'll start that.
Well, you have heard from where the real work is happening at school. So we're going to talk about some of the behind-the-scenes things. As you can see, our areas are also in progress. The board will get a sneak peek now, but you'll hear a lot in closed session about kind of where we're at with our certifying classified employee plan. Because first thing, it starts with, we've organized it around three buckets. As you know, hiring, training, retaining. Hiring, we've done the conversion and it's not just the human resources or the Personnel Services Department, but also Business Services. We've transitioned to the Human Capital Management System. That is, while that's in progress, I will say we've had a successful launch starting last month. Other districts that have transitioned are having nightmares. And I'm proud to say that we, not perfect, but going really, really well. We only messed up Tim's check. Sorry, Tim. And he still won the last one, though. Among a few others. But Raphael's team, Mr. Guzman's team, and mine have been working overtime. So we want to acknowledge the stuff that they've done to make sure that it's been as seamless as possible. The other pieces, as you know, collective bargaining, that you'll get an update tonight around the pieces. We are at the table currently, started yesterday with the final two. We're at the table with all four and moving on track during closed session tonight. I will give you an update on where we're at there as well as with the calendar. We're happy to say we're moving right along. The tenor at the table has been really good and negotiations is going well. So the key pieces though that we do is the training. I'm going to kick that to my colleague, Dustin Seaman.
Yeah, part of our training process is obviously identifying new teacher orientation. 100% of our new teachers had, sat through our orientation process, which we extended through our work through a strategic plan over the last two to three years. We've extended the length of our training program and onboarding our new teachers. Not just to, it used to be a single 10-day. We now extend it to two full days. Plus there's ongoing support from our district instructional coach, Dr. Michael Sherman, throughout the school year. So we just don't throw them into a classroom. And not that the state administration doesn't support them either, but then they constantly have somebody to go to throughout the school year for random questions. Like, how do I get ready for my evaluation process that they may not lean on their administrator for? In addition to, we are constantly working on increasing our numbers for national board certification. And so one of the things I do appreciate from the Education Services staff, they went through and did Lunch and Learns with all of the teachers at each of the sites at the start of the school year to talk about the benefits of becoming nationally board certified and the support that Ed Services team can provide them through that process. So we have increased our enrollment in that cohort. So we do have additional teachers that are seeking national board certification through our support, which is very unique and different to be a USD. So I thank the Board of Education for allowing us to go on that path to trying to increase the number that we have certified on our campus. And there is data to support that when teachers are nationally board certified, that they do have a direct correlation to increased student test scores, attendance, and student engagement. And then last but not least is, we also talked about just our professional learning. And then last but not least is, we also talked about just our professional learning communities. Principals, assistant principals, myself, Maggie Mayberry, Dr. Michael Sherman, attended at the National Institute in the fall. We were able to take a ton of information back with us. Kelly is actually, it's one of her topics tomorrow at her Wednesday morning staff meeting. And we said we were committed to a hundred percent of our teachers utilizing the same vocabulary and being on the same page. And we will have met that goal by February 16th, our professional development day because we are lucky to have secured one of the major trainers in the world, Mr. Mike Maddos will be here for us specifically. And so we do invite the Board of Education to, Dr. Brege.
Just gonna ask for it.
Yes, and we'll be able to be part of that keynote in the morning and be able to hear, in that way, everybody in the community has the same language moving forward. And so a formal invitation will come out from Dr. Brege for the February 16th date, participate with us, our teachers, our instructional assistants. We are just working with Ms. Collins Williams. I'm making sure that everybody that works with the student is going to have the same information and vocab moving forward.
Thank you. I know Mrs. Marcus had a question for Dr. Horvath, so. Mrs. Marcus, whenever you're ready, you can.
Okay, I would like to make a comment on the, and says all, which we waited too long for the evaluation and the board has already discussed that, but on the last one, all teachers on cycle for evaluation during the 23-24 school year will be able to participate. I don't think that I like the fact that they have a choice for whether they want to participate in the new evaluation program. Why are we giving, why is the statement written like that? That's number one. And, like, do we have to wait for 24, 25 to really implement this? We've been waiting so long, it's unfortunate, but I don't know why we can't achieve it this year. But we're already in 23-24, the teachers are already in it. But I'm very upset that it said it will be able to participate. My thought is they will participate in the new evaluation pilot program.
Rochelle, this is Noah. The reason that the teachers, it's not mandatory this year is because we're still under the current contract, which this particular evaluation is not a part of. That's why it's on a volunteer basis and why it will start within the next contract, starting in '24.
They will be able to know that they could participate in it then, right?
Yeah, they know now that they can voluntarily participate. It's our hopes that after.
All right, then my question is, how many have voluntarily said they will work under that evaluation process?
We have a big number, Mrs. Marcus. Last count was between 25 and 30 at this point in time, but I will be able to provide an update during closed session, more on kind of our progress with the evaluation at the table.
25, between 25 and 30, out of how many that are being evaluated?
About 150 that are on cycle.
So about one-fifth of them are opting or one-fourth, even maybe a little bit less, I have to give the numbers, are not, they're gonna go with the old system?
That's correct.
Disappointing.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you, moving on.
All right, thank you very much. So for our facilities department, typically Mr. Ken Haas will be presenting this section. Unfortunately, he's, he's been out ill for the past couple of days, actually. He is recovering well though, so hopefully he should be here sometime this week. But in regards to facilities, as you can see, we have four goals here, as you see on the screen. Amongst them is the five-year deferred maintenance plan and we are on target right now to complete our scheduled deferred maintenance projects for 23-24. And so we're really excited about that. We're thankful to the board for allowing us to have a deferred maintenance budget in the first place and that's actually really important to keep our schools modernized and fitted correctly. So that's something that we're really excited about. We're on schedule to complete all of our projects for this year. In regards to our work order requests, we've seen some really good improvement in regards to how quickly we address things. Some of our principals are here and they could probably attest to that for the most part. We are currently answering our work requests and they are about in within 24 hours. So we're evaluating them, we're going in, we're using our systems to do that and they are being addressed. If for some reason they cannot be corrected within that timeframe, we are scheduling them so that they get corrected quickly. And we think this is a really important turn for us because we wanna make sure that things are addressed as quickly and expeditiously as possible. So we're definitely making strides there. In regards to the principal survey, that will go out in conjunction with the business department survey. We plan to send that out in December. I think that's a good point in the year to really get people's honest opinions and also to get a good gauge of what's happened so far this year. So our intention really is to really get honest feedback from our principals and from our sites in regards to how we're progressing in the facilities department as well as the business department. And so that's also something that we are doing in our principal meetings that we have monthly. We, we not only meet about the budget, but we also have a section of time where we ask that specific question is, everything going good with your work orders? Is everything going well with maintenance? Are things going well with other areas that are related to the business umbrella? And so we get feedback from our principals there and so we're really excited about that. And lastly, our FIT report. Our 23-24 FIT report findings have been corrected at each site and we are taking steps to ensure that our next FIT report continues to be successful. And we presented on that before and we've seen that continued success. So overall, I think we are in progress in all of these, continuous progress, but we are making some very significant strides.
Thank you, Mr. Guzman. Mrs. Marcus, you had a question on facilities?
Yes, I do. I would like to question the first item, the, this five-year plan carries us through 29-30. Are you continually updating that to include another year? Because you really would never arrive at the end of it. Or you don't wait until 29-30 to make a new five-year plan? I wonder if that's in progress at this time? That would be my first question. And could you tell me what FIT stands for?
Yes, so in regards to your first question, the, the thing that we are doing, yes, we are continuously addressing and looking at our sites to add that extra year in our five-year deferred maintenance plan. We are doing that. We're looking at where in time we can address certain things that we need at the sites. One of the things that's actually going to help us with this, Mrs. Marcus, is that we are currently looking at doing a facilities master plan. The facilities master plan is often confused with only construction and it's really not a, it is in some ways of sorts a construction document, but it's also very much a facilities upkeep document. So we look at the facilities, we evaluate where things are in regards to useful life, like, you know, for instance, this building. When's the next time that we have to paint the building? Those are things that we look at in the facilities master plan. And so we might look at the building and say, hey, you know what? It looks like it's gonna be good for another three, four years. So let's not schedule it till 29-30 and so then we'll add that into the plan. And so we're consistently doing that, but we are, we currently just went through an RFP for a facilities master plan that will inform us on a lot of this. We had two bids actually from that.
Don't take too much from my presentation.
Yes, yeah, I'm not trying to take too much. You'll go, you'll go over that, you'll go over that next. But yes, that's, that's where we are. But the FIT report is the report where they come out to our sites, you know, and assess how, we get scores on how we did in regards to how our facilities are being maintained. And so that is where we are with, with the FIT report for the most part. We did really well in, in our assessments. It's, it's, it's an actual tool and there's a spreadsheet that's utilized. It's called a facilities inspection tool, is what we're doing for that. But we did really well.
Facilities instruction tool?
Inspection, facilities inspection tool.
It's okay, thank you very much. But what I'm getting at is that we don't wait till 29-30 then to make another five-year plan. It's ongoing all the time, so you know, we never will really be done with it.
Correct, yes, but it's good to have it because we can plan out for five years. So for instance.
Well, I understand that, but I'm just saying that we have to consider that we are constantly having to keep things up.
Absolutely, and that's so vital because, for instance, if we, if we don't do this, then three years down the road, if all of a sudden we need to repaint all of our buildings, the board's just gonna look at me and tell me, what, what are you doing, Raphael? Like, why did you tell us that we had to do this? And so that's why this is so important because then I can inform the board, hey, you know, three years from now, we're gonna have to do X, Y and Z and it's gonna cost us this much money. We need to separate some, some amounts of money in our budget for that. So that's why we do this and absolutely you're right, Ms. Marcus, we consistently update this.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Raphael on facilities? Okay, moving on to, well, correct, thank you, sir.
All right, so as Raphael was about to mention, one of our first goals that we've, a task to do is to update our facilities master plan. I'm sorry, I was right, differently out there. We're on the next, oh, sorry, it's okay. So all of my goals, by the way, are in progress. I put Matt for our final goal, which I'll explain in a second because we have already started doing that, but it'll always be in progress. For the facilities master plan, we did just receive two proposals or responses to our RFQ that we issued to our entire architectural pool. Some of the other architects that didn't respond that basically stated that they're more interested in our design-build project rather than submitting on this master, master plan project. So that's why we only got two. We are going to set up an interview committee for that and probably schedule that to happen in the next week or two. Yeah, so that was our goal for November to actually establish and select that architect. Our goal there was to develop the transition team, which we have done, as Sarah started, also mentioned. We did develop the team, so we definitely met that goal, but we also started to meet. We've had several meetings in October and we also established kind of like a smaller group of us to, to talk about change management, not just the transition plan. So yeah, like I said, we met in October a few times. We established timelines, we discussed needs assessment, infrastructure requirements, IT, phone lines. And I think we're hitting the ground running with that transition plan. The next goal is to basically move forward with our DHHS projects, our high school projects. And our initial goal is to complete a design schedule that includes all the projects and when we intend to start them. And ultimately, our main goal is to get one started. So our design-build project for the upper athletic fields, we put out an RFQ and those proposals will do today at 2 o'clock. I just got an update that we have four design-build entities that proposed and we're excited to review those four proposals. And we're looking forward to having a competitive process and basically bringing on the best firm that, out of those four. We, so we did establish the national schedule and then we also have those other projects at the high school to include the grand lawn, building seed and the south side athletic fields. And those are all on the construction schedule that we presented to the board back in September as part of our study session. And then finally, increasing public updates regarding construction progress. We've met that goal based to the help from Ms. Starkins here. She's been very helpful in helping us get those out to the public on Instagram. Our Fumish Laurie team and I basically come up with the content for our construction newsletters or we call them construction highlights. And then with the help of Rebecca, we get them out on Instagram. We also send them out to the neighbors as well and our monthly construction updates are continuously posted on our website. And that's all I have.
Thank you, and I believe Mrs. Marcus, you have a question for Mr. Carr?
It's not a question, it's a comment basically because I'm looking at, you know, the move from the district office, which is not on here, but of course it's part of the transition. And I just wanna make a comment about something that I think I read about making a parking lot out of part of a playground at Hawthorne. And I have to tell you, that will never fly with me to remove the basketball. And I'm not, I'm just speaking preliminary and I mean, maybe it's nothing, but the teachers at Hawthorne, however many there are, the staff at Hawthorne, all of the people that work at Hawthorne have always been able to park on the street, along the elevator, on the other side of the street and so on. I would be very adamant about making a parking lot and losing the basketball courts at Hawthorne. So I'm just making that comment.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Marcus. As I mentioned, I think in the board questions, there's no final plan. We were just talking about various scenarios and of course, nothing is even set in stone or in any other type of media. We still have to have several meetings about the future of Hawthorne and it's, nothing is ever set against us.
Well, just getting my opinion out of right now.
All right.
Anybody else, questions for construction? Okay, thank you. We'll go, guess back to Mr. Guzman.
Thank you. So business and fiscal services. So one of the things that we are looking at continuously is our procedures. We actually reviewed a draft of our manual with our district office at one of our lunch and learns, which is something new that we're doing this year and we're thankful for, for Dr. Brege and this idea of just getting the district together and just having some time to just, to eat some lunch and be able to share these type of things. And it's really important that we do that. And during one of these, we did, the, we reviewed this manual. And so we are almost ready to finalize it and so once that's finalized, we'll place it in one of our December updates. So, and the next item is establishing industry standard procedures. We're continuously looking at that. Those things change from time to time. So it's never gonna be something that we fully complete because things will change next year inevitably. When things happen, things change and so we just have to make sure that we are continuously adapting to those changes. But for the most part, we have incorporated these processes into our daily operations. We've added them into our manuals and we will continue to revise this as things happen. This is a very fluid type of environment and so we're continuously making sure that processes are updated. Regarding financial reporting, we've done all of our financial reports on time and they've all been approved successfully through various entities, including Laco and including CDE. When we look at our budget, our 45-day revision and things of that nature, we're currently in the process of completing our first interim report by the deadline and so we've presented all of the reports in a timely manner as well. So for the most part, those financial reports are all being completed on time and we continue to also anticipate that they will be completed on time. Our quarterly site surveys is another item that we looked at doing. So we are sending that out in December along with the facilities assessment so that we can look at where we are in regards to, in regards to providing services to our sites. The fifth goal that we looked at was audit report. We are in the final stages of that as well and we hope that the audit report will be completed. It actually should be completed by January of 2024. We're just putting some finishing touches on that, so we're really excited about those things so far. We haven't had any major issues in our audit, so that's great to know. And finally, Dr. Horvath touched on this a little bit earlier, our best HCM implementation. Let me just say and reiterate what he said earlier. Our team has just done a fantastic job with this. It is not a simple process and it seems simple in its face, but it's really not. We have some other districts that also did this transition and they are struggling. They've had some very difficult days in regards to payroll, but our district was very smooth. Again, I think we only messed up one person's pay. And so, and it is something that we.
And he's not here, look what happened.
Yeah, he left. And so we, and so it was a system thing. It wasn't even our employee, it was just something was off with the configuration on, on the system side. So it wasn't us. But it just goes to show the hard work that's happening in our payroll department and our HR department. And I just wanna publicly thank, you know, our payroll team, Mr. Teresa Cortez, as well as Angelica in our payroll team and Mari Lou, who's, who's also been supporting as well. And everyone else in our department that's been part of that, including Marisela Salinas. Just, you know, it's just been a tremendous team effort. And so we're happy because we've implemented it with very minor corrections and setbacks. So we're very excited about what the future holds and now our employees can actually go online and look at their checks, which is awesome. I just can't tell you how excited I am about that.
And also you're not fielding their calls and requests for documentation, right?
Yes, yes, they can go straight to their, to the. Yes, yes, they can go straight to their, to the website. They look at their check, and they're like, oh, that looks good. And so it's awesome. Really excited about it. Thank you.
I need to latch on to some of that enthusiasm about this. Still don't see it yet, but it's, it's very exciting, very exciting.
Thank you.
Okay. Heather.
Yes. I'm Heather.
I have a question. Can I leave then?
Sure.
Before we leave that. Rafael, I was just curious to know, you know, when we meet the purchase orders, and let's say there's a purchase order for something that we could have voted up to but not received a certain amount, and then we start to pay out the warrants for that particular service when they occur. Does that understand what I'm saying?
Uh huh. So what was?
So in other words, let's say they reserve my services to teach science and they gave $22,000 or something like that. But I only turned in because I was getting the work or whatever for $18,000. So my question is, when those things happen, do you have a collective total of how much was not spent for that item?
Yes, yes.
To take that same thing for the next year, we were to get the same thing again?
Yes, so what we do, the way it works is, for example, right, if there is a PO that's submitted for, let's say, $20,000, our system holds that money, you know, it kind of like sets it aside, saying, hey, we're not gonna spend this. We're gonna act like you already spent it per se. It's like holding that money. So if your budget was $40,000 and you had a PO for $20,000, you only have $20,000 left to spend, right? So in that $20,000, though, it automatically takes the payments from that $20,000. So it starts deducting from that PO. So if you only spent $10,000, it's only, we're only paying what was actually spent. So what was actually invoiced. That's how that works.
I know within budget at the end of the year like that, do you ever figure out how much we save by not reaching the purchase order amount?
Yes. So what we do at the first interim report and the second interim, more so at the second interim report, is we look at the balances and we look at these POs as a collective total. And we say, hey, it doesn't look like we're gonna spend this money. Like, if there's a PO that's only 10% spent and it's second interim, we're probably going to ask the department lead and say, hey, are you not gonna spend this money anymore? Because if you're not, we're gonna free up this PO. We're gonna close it. And so then they tell us, yes, we're not gonna spend it anymore. And so then we close it. So we do that consistently. But at the estimated actuals, that's when we send out a notification. We tell everybody, hey, like, let me know if you're gonna spend any more money on your POs. If not, we're closing them. And that's how we do the estimated actuals. And then we present that to the board, and the board gets a summary of, hey, we're not going to spend, you know, this amount of money anymore. We're gonna spend another amount of money.
And he's already working on us.
Yes.
Everyone can attest to that.
And this is new, because in the past, that wasn't as much of a practice here. But now we're doing that. Like, we're actually, you know.
Rafael, is this, is this also having you reconcile how much you allocate towards certain items? Because you see that, hey, we've been, for example, allocating 50K a year towards this.
It's, it's.
But we're not using it, so let's start to scale that back?
That is what we're modeling towards. What you're kind of like alluding to is what Ms. Wells kind of.
The zero, yeah.
Yeah, the zero-based budget. And Ms. Wells kind of spoke about that like months ago. And we are going towards that. But this is what we need to do to be able to do that.
To get there.
Yep.
I get you.
We clean it up as we go now.
Yeah. Thanks for your question, Rochelle.
Okay, thank you. Couple more things to hit. It's almost 3:00, so Heather, yours.
My name's Heather Oyamo. I oversee the food services department here. I'd just like to thank all of my staff because they've put in so much creativity and effort. And like, a lot of the ideas come from them, and they take pride in what they do. And I just really appreciate that. Like, I'll show up to a site, and I've said this many times, but it keeps happening. They're like, hey, look what we did. And I'm like, oh, wow. Like, they're doing, like, today I went to BV and I saw samplings of grapefruit in little cups. Like, just little things like that. And it's just, it's just kind of, it's just their ideas, and I appreciate it. So I'm gonna go through our goals. We've got kitchen infrastructure and training funds, which all, pretty much all schools got. And it's really nice for us because it gives us a chance to update our outdated equipment. And it also gives us a chance to train our staff. So the first staff training I held was on a knife training because I want to do more fresh fruits and vegetables. And a lot of the staff weren't really comfortable with their knives, or I wasn't comfortable watching them with their knives. So they, we did a knife training. So now we have a training in place, and they know how to use their knives better. And I see a lot more people cutting confidently in cucumber slices and watermelon. And there's a lot of things we're doing. The wellness committee is our second goal. We've been meeting since last school year. And pretty much, you know, I've discussed like our progress. And we, and then when they give ideas of how to improve things or change things, and they have questions. So it's been really helpful seeing what their suggestions are. The next one is a project school nutrition. I'm gonna, it's actually, this is something that I haven't really been able to do in the past, but now with the extra funding. It's a program where we enter all of our data, and they actually help us do that for nutritionals. So eventually, I'm hoping by the end of the school year, I'll be able to have all the nutritionals and recipes and production records in one place instead of like many different places. The next thing, that the last one is we train staff and improving recipes. So that's what my staff has been kind of doing. Like, they've been coming up with new ideas, new recipes. They've been talking to kids. I've been talking to kids. Like, one time somebody asked me, who makes the menu? And it's not me who makes the menu. It's the children, the parents, the staff. Like, going out there and just talking to them and like seeing what they like, what they want to see. And a good, a good, a good way that happened is the kids wanted gourmandos. So we were able to bring in gourmandos. I don't know if I'm saying it right, but.
You got it. We did it. We were able to bring it in through the culture program, and the kids are real excited.
And then we tried pizza bagels at the elementary school. They didn't go over so well, so we moved on. And then, but we tried them at the middle school and the high school, and they loved them. So there's different, and that's how we create the menus with, 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 and we improve our recipes. And we created a new smoothie at the middle school. We're trying to branch it out to other schools, and that was part of the wellness committee. So all of my goals kind of just morphed together. But we're really, I feel like we're doing really well. And there's always room for improvement, and that's, and we're just keep on going. And so that's kind of where I'm at. Oh, I have one more thing to say. Train staff and improve recipes. We also train staff on the importance of the presentation on the salad bar. That is something we discovered last year. And I'm sure many places have discovered that. If we package fruits and vegetables in a really pretty container, they'll take it. If we, if we put watermelon slices out and make the kids put them on their own tray, they're not gonna take it. So we're doing a little extra effort. You'll see in the picture here, like, it's a little fruit, a little platter with broccoli and cauliflower. And you put a little ranch cup in there. Now they're gonna take it. But if you tell them to get their own broccoli, they're not gonna take it. So that's part of our training.
Thank you very much. Any questions regarding food services? I know Mary and I and Judy have been involved in the wellness committee. And the goal seems to be pushing forward in producing just the healthier options for our students. And Heather is so amenable to looking into that process every time we bring something up. So we appreciate it.
We also tried oatmeal on Monday.
How did that go?
We made 96, and we had 36 left over. But that was the middle school, the first day we were trying. So we're trying little new stuff.
Do you like steel cut oatmeal?
It was quick oats, but yeah.
During nutrition?
During nutrition, yeah. We tried it. We did some with like fruit, some without fruit. And we're just, just little things we're trying.
Okay.
Spoonful of Nutella.
Thank you very much. And then we have Mr. Mead.
Okay, great, thank you. So we are progressing with our three goals. And you can see the two in the middle are actually one goal split apart. So the first goal progressing through the year is to have monthly site meetings and trainings. They're typically tabletop activities with our security officers, both our BHUSD security officers and, when possible, NASDAQ officers as well. So that's been a nice combination. Every month, we've had a NASDAQ manager in there as well, making sure that we're discussing differences in responses and calibrating how we might respond as armed and unarmed as BHUSD and NASDAQ officers. Hopefully, along the way also, taking a lot of input from our guards themselves who have great, wealthy experience, both in our school districts and in securing events here and elsewhere. So those have gone really great. You can see in the handout that we are in November now. We're on our fourth topic. And we are beginning a series on active threats this month, specific to perimeter response, an active threat from the exterior, not a student. We will get more and more into kind of the interior stuff, the soft interior, and how we can help with being the eyes and ears. Observant report is a very common theme in all of these observant report. And so a lot of it tends to be about response and communication, things like that. So that's going really well. Just so you know, at the end of the month, we get everybody together to review. So there's site meetings, and then at the end of the month, there's a group meeting that's on Zoom. That's the only way to get everybody there all at once. The other ones are in person. The next two goals, one was the emergency operations plan. That hadn't been revised in I don't know how long, a long, long time. That was very heavy on the front end. It was a lot of work at the beginning of the year, essentially rewrite the whole plan. And I'm pretty happy with how it turned out. One of the things that we did, and I think it's going to transfer nicely no matter where the district office goes, is basically there's two parts. There's the school that exists at the district office and how they respond, and the emergency operations team. So that's Dr. Breggy's district-wide emergency response. So having those two pieces that come together and split up. And we paired that with a very robust, great shakeout operation this year. Every site did an amazing job of having search and rescue aspects, a lot of communication to the community about the request gate, reunion gate, and that whole process. I know that most of our schools actually has parents come in and retrieve their children. Some of them even have the parents act distressed, which I thought was a great thing. So, and we even used the emergency operations team, meaning Dr. Breggy's district-wide emergency response team. We talked about our roles and responses. It was really great. So those two things went together. The emergency operations plan is essentially done, but it is never done. Like, we said with a lot of things, it's always evolving. Looking forward to reviewing some or all aspects with our community partners as well. We've already done it with the police and the fire, but maybe some of our actually BH city partners as well. And lastly, we passed the joint powers agreement as a school, district, and a city. And there were some adjustments to how we are supervising and securing joint powers events. And so we wanted to put one goal that recognizes that. So one of the things that had to happen right away was a change in assignments, who was assigned to where. And so what we did at the beginning of the year was review all of the different assignments that are consistent and also review ones that come and go depending on joint powers agreement shifts and needs. Long story short, our goal this year is to have at least 95% on time at the post effective communication for all JPA events. And I can say this went really, really well. We are well above 95%. You'll remember last year, we had a similar type of goal with a much less ambitious number. We are currently, you know, especially considering that this came into existence on the fly, like build the plane, you know, as you're flying. We are averaging one assignment per month out of 112. And when an assignment is missed, I just want to make sure everyone understands that it is for a brief period of time, all hands on deck, who are we gonna move, how are we gonna make sure somebody's there? These missed assignments are very rare. And when they happen, we cover them as immediately as possible. So if somebody's not there on time, we count it, even if we cover the shift within four minutes, right? So just want you to know, it's like that. So we want it to be completely reliable and completely effective. And on November 7th, I did one of our check-ins. We have another one, I think, this week, where I'm asking, are you hearing any feedback? Are our guards there? Are they providing the service? And really, really positive responses from armed and unarmed teams on the weekends and in the evenings. I think they're both, both groups are figuring out the differences and the similarities and the support mechanisms. And it sounds like we're hearing nothing but really positive things. I've had multiple opportunities to hear from AYSO partners. And especially given what's going on in the world right now, how much better they feel, both with the familiar faces on the interior, the unarmed, and on the exterior, having an armed guard there. So a lot of positive, moving right along, everything in progress and on track.
Thank you very much, Mark. Any questions regarding security?
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And now, last but not least, Ms. Starkins.
Yes. So ultimately, we wanted to be able to take an opportunity to highlight just a few things. One, congratulate Ms. Starkins for being named for Laco Cabinet Member of the Year for Director of Communications. Jennifer Hugley, whose classroom is right behind us too, for representing us for also the Los Angeles County Office of Education for our Teacher of the Year. So part of the, part of the recognition, obviously, is just being able to, be able to nominate our colleagues and our peers for the hard work that they've been doing in BHUSD. We also submitted a name for our School Council of the Year. Unfortunately, that person was not selected this year. And so that person actually does not know whether or not they were nominated. But we'll continue that process to being able to award some of our other categories outside of just administration and teachers. In addition, we did submit to the California School Board Association for the Golden Bell Award. Again, I applaud you guys for being selected to be able to present on November 30th as a school board superintendent, and Ms. Starkins as well. But also Jamie Weddle, one of our school counselors, submitted and was accepted and presented. And we got to attend the California Association of School Counselors in partnership with the Matthew Silverman Foundation. So that was excellent. So this goal has really reached, just not within our level here at the administrative level. We are really encouraging our teachers. Another example that I wouldn't highlight too, and I forgot, is Dr. Michael Sherman, our district instructional coach, was accepted and presented at the National Council for Teaching Mathematics in Washington, DC. So if I was to geek out about any of this, this is like the cream of the crop. And we have somebody from our own district representing at the national level at a math conference. It's pretty, we should all be pretty darn proud of that one. Outside of that, I think, any?
I'd like to congratulate Hawthorne on their silver PV, I guess.
Yes, too.
I think that Mr. Seaman's really summed that up well. As we said in our last meeting at the last update that we did, there are so many people doing so many incredible things throughout our district. We have students who are achieving phenomenal things, both inside school and outside of school. And I really encourage anyone who's watching at home, but also all of you to follow us on social media because we can't always get every single thing from every single student and staff member into all of our publications. We do our very, very best. But please follow along because on social media, we do capture that information and really celebrate those people. So that would be the only additions.
Totally. And I, and to back up Ms. Starkins too, is I just think that sediment administration only knows what is brought to them sometimes. And so we do have, since like I think of the independent study program, we have a lot of students that may not have that direct connection with Mr. Stewart. And we do need the parents sometimes to reach out to us too to highlight that if your students competing at a national level outside of the district that may not be associated, but it's just as important for us to want to be able to highlight their successes. They may not play on the D U G just football team, but they may play on a national level hockey team that might have won nationals. We would love to celebrate those things as well. We just need to know about that. So to reach out to your state administration or to us as well directly, speaking to the wider community.
Unless you all have things that we should celebrate, please tell us.
Yeah.
Thank you. I filed my taxes today.
Good job. I will wait till the 14th.
Thank you. Cross me into celebration in mind. Colleagues, any comments on the study session before we move into closed?
No, thank you so much, really. It just feels like you guys have such a strong grasp and such vision and intention with everything that you're doing.
And that it's something that's happening so deeply and so consistently that if something is maybe not going the way that you would want it, my impression is that you could easily pivot and go in a better direction. And so it's not something that I feel like there's going to be an oops moment at the end. It's like, seems like this is just ingrained in the culture and the communication. And it's this constant like churning of the wheel and I really appreciate it. It's clear how much time and attention you're, you're paying, you know, to this. And to the extent that we as a board can help you further your efforts or support you, I hope, you know, even mid-year, you would not hesitate to come back. There's no reason to wait till next year.
Definitely. And I'll just stand by saying, I appreciate the, the small little spurts of data and percentages that's reflective of the changes in our practice in both interventions and behavior, attendance and academics that is starting to come out. It's, it's, it's what we have at this point. We understand that as a board. Hopefully at the next check-in, we'll have more substantial data, academics and things like that. So we can really make sure that we're in the right direction. Yes, Mrs. Wells?
I, I would also just like to thank you all because like, you know, each time we do this, it feels like it just gets even better. And the confidence I, I feel coming from you about what you're talking about and in that process, it just feels to me like it just continues to grow. And I think change is hard. And sitting here when we first sat down the first time and each time we do it, it feels more comfortable and it feels more collaborative. And, and that's really a testament to all of you for really buying into that and really participating in that. And I know it's really hard for that buy-in to go all the way, you know, to trickle down all the way. And that, that takes time as well. But it does feel really gratifying to watch this process. And I just want to thank you all because it's a lot of work. And, and it's because of your commitment to really work these plans and really hold yourselves and everyone accountable. That's why we're seeing this progress. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you, everyone. We're going to adjourn the study session, take five minutes, 3:15, close session across the hall, correct?
Yep.
It's a classroom?
Yeah, just right out of this way. Thank you all.
Thank you.